Now I found this correct. That's from those condos. Isn't there a house there? And it looked to me like that.
I still think it's what they were. Rowan Person thought it was a pond.
We had to fade in and fade out.
They're still a little chunk right there. Rowan Person tried to get it turned on.
I'd like to call to order the zoning commission meeting of November 12, 2008. Let the record show that all members are present. This time I'll open the floor for public comment period. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on any item not on the agenda, please come forward and you'll have three minutes to speak. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Doug Badon. I'm a resident at 18315 Crete Myrtle Lane in Prairieville, Louisiana, in the Myrtle subdivision. I'm here before you tonight due to a zoning issue that I understand staff will make the final decision on. However, I'd like to indulge your attention to bring this particular matter before you. I'd like to show you some pictures if I could. This is a photograph of my backyard. I live in Myrtle subdivision. As you can see, it's rather tranquil even after Gustaf paid us a visit. Behind the Mother Mary statue in the back is the fence that I own and that I built. It's an eight-foot-tall cedar fence. To give you a better perspective as to where, and you might need to zoom in on this.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can you just tell me what zoning?
Obviously, I'm residential. I am residential in my subdivision.
No, I understand. Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is just public comment.
Okay, sorry.
If I can get you to zoom in on this picture. Okay.
We want to turn it.
There you go. Let me rotate this. And I'm going to point this out with my pen. This is Old Perkins Road. I'm sorry, this is the railroad track that runs across Old Perkins Road. Right here is Old Perkins Road. This is an entrance to a trailer park that is behind my property. This is a dirt road. At the rear of the trailer park, there's a structure located about here. It's a warehouse. This is my house at this point. So essentially, right behind my fence, there is an old warehouse. It's been there since the time that I built my home. This is my neighbor, Mr. Joel Tingle, lives in this home. At the rear of the property is Mr. Robert McGee, Mr. Mouton, Mr. Torterich, Mr. Villa Rubia lives in this house. The reason I'm before you tonight is to point out that sometime back, a marble slash granite shop occupied this building. They don't own this building, it's my understanding. They rent it. That's the address on the sign. There's one particular part of this sign I'd ask you to pay close attention to, and that's the word fabrication. What we essentially have here is an industrial facility taking raw products, as illustrated on this picture, slabs of marble. And I don't know how many of you are used to the sounds of high-speed drills, cutting instruments, saws, and polishing tools, but they have a way of penetrating the best insulated walls available. This is another picture across my fence, directly behind my house. You can see the slabs of marble. Another one lined up. Also sent to staff for Lance to consider a letter signed by all subdivision residents, our objection to the potential expansion of this marble shop. Currently, as my understanding, it is proposed to build a 1,500-square-foot showroom for the marble shop.
Thirty seconds, okay.
Okay. Not only will this showroom ensure that they remain in business and continue to be the nuisance that they are, but it also is going to present another problem. If you remember the trailer park that I showed you, traffic is actually going to drive through the trailer park to a showroom, a dirt road occupied by trailers. And the last picture that I'd ask you to look at is the building itself. This is taken from my property. That's how close I am. This is the building. And associated with this process are some large metal bins that routinely large chunks of marble are discarded into in a very violent manner in order to break the marble into smaller pieces so they occupy less space. I really don't know how this was permitted to be put here.
That's time, okay.
I'd ask for your consideration of any questions.
All right.
What's the procedure? Can we discuss this?
No, it's just comment. Really, there's no...
That's it?
I would ask that maybe you discuss it with staff. Thank you.
All right. Acceptance of the minutes of the October 9, 2008 meeting.
I'd like to see about getting the minutes amended to include Commissioner Wells's Since his name does not appear in, I think there was only one item of business that he abstained on, and that was the acceptance of the minutes of the August 13, 2008 meeting. He was sworn in during the planning commission meeting, so yes, he was here. Should we go ahead and get staff to do that? I'll make a motion to adopt the amended minutes.
Motion by Michael Marshawn, seconded by Paige Becknow, Sherri Slime. Any opposition? Motion carries. Public hearing to consider the following rezoning cases. Zoning ID 1954.08, tract A1, Robert Thibodeau property. Anyone here to present this?
Hi, I'm Retina Horb. And we just want y'all to consider making this, rezoning this to MU so that we can improve the property as far as offices and such. So that's what we're asking for.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Lance, just to help me out with the colors here, could you tell me what the blue, the pink, the brown signify?
Sure. The blue is RM. The yellow, or I guess the light color, whitish-looking color, is crossroad commercial. The pink is mixed use. And then that darker color is properties that were petitioned prior to zoning. So basically, those are commercial also, the darker, I guess, yellowish colors. Brown. Thanks.
Lance, can you give us an update on where our MU2 statuses?
Sure, yes, ma'am. That's been submitted to the council for approval, or for public hearing, and for approval with the recommendation from the commission to make that change.
So that would be approved before this would be?
Yes, ma'am. It's going to then.
Any other comments, questions at this time? Hearing none. Like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this property, please come forward. You have three minutes to speak.
I'm Juanita Bakala. I'm the immediate neighbor of this piece of property. We just happened to see the sign out in front of the property that there was a hearing going to be held. And I guess my question is, I didn't receive any kind of notice in the mail about this, and didn't know what the changes were, and still do not understand what the change would be or what restrictions would be on this MU, this mixed use. I understand that's a very broad category. So the property is directly across from a condo, which is residential, and of course, next to us, in the Johnny Taylor property, which are all residential. So I was just, I was concerned about what MU might allow, since we still have some residential strip right there, even though we're fast being overcome by commercial. So that was my question, is what would MU allow?
Staff, it looks like there's a strip of land in between the Thibodeau and Bakala property. Is that?
That's ours. We all own the, we're right next to the Thibodeau property. We own the strip and the original property that we have.
Okay, just not labeled on the map that we have.
And then the next property, next to us, is the Johnny Taylor property, and then you're moving on over. So I think that was my question I wanted to ask of you, is what MU would allow that property to be used for?
MU allows, well, do you want to answer that?
You go ahead.
MU allows quite a large, broad of commercial. And that's why I asked about MU2, because it narrows down what is allowed under MU2, which could be like a doctor's office, which you already have out there, a plaza being built across the street as well, a medical plaza being built across the street.
But it would rule out the fabrication facilities and things like that?
That's what I'm concerned, or Go-Go Bar.
It would rule out another bar.
Right. Another bar, or something objectionable. That was my question. You know, what is the possibility of protecting the value of my property?
That's why I asked Lance about MU2.
So MU2 will be in place before?
Before this would get approved, MU2 would be approved already.
All right. And will we receive some kind of a notice when this?
No, no, ma'am. In zoning, the only notice you get is the yellow sign on the property.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
But this would go to the council, and you could go to the council meeting next month with your concerns as well.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Public hearing is closed. Comments, questions by commissioners?
Well, I would not like to see this go MU. So what would we have to do to change it to MU2, to request that it be, they submit, does it have to be resubmitted, or can we just ask?
No, I don't think it would have to be resubmitted. I just think that the applicant, if they would be agreeable to it, I think that would be fine.
And this is, is that something that?
I would be agreeable to that. I'm not a...
That's okay.
My first time here.
You're doing great.
We would be fine with MU2. We have no intentions of putting a fabrication shop or anything on this property. That's not our intentions. It's been a real estate mortgage company for years now, but in order for us to improve the property and such, we would need y'all's help as far as the zoning goes.
This would just give better clarification.
Whether or not it's MU or MU2, you're still looking at a spot zoning issue. So are you, now, I understand MU2 is the lesser of the evils, but you still have a spot zoning.
And that's another question I would ask the zoning subcommittee chairman to give us an update on what's going on in that area. I know, weren't y'all doing some spot zoning?
Yeah, we were. And the maps that we have show this area going in the commercial direction. And I, you know, given the uses that are immediately around this, this is the, this is not going to be, or would fall under any definition of spot zoning at all. I mean, the fact of the matter is that across the street is a medical plaza under development. There's already recognized commercial uses immediately across the street and adjacent, you know, and down the hall. So, I mean, it's really not an issue of spot zoning at all. It's, if we had a future land use plan, it'd almost be consistent with it.
There's two arguments against the spot zoning argument at this point. Although you guys recommend denial, the parcel immediately to the south or west was rezoned. That is mixed use, which, when MU2 gets approved, I think that we may move forward and ask that applicant if he'd be willing to go to MU2.
You're talking to the, you're talking about the property just adjacent to them. Yes, it is already zoned commercial.
Which one is?
Sibling.
Yeah.
That one is rezoned to mixed use. And then the other argument is, I think you'd be hard-pressed to find a lawyer that says that that road is residential in character, because it's not. It ceased to be a residential road, I think, when our population hit certain threshold. You're at the interstate. I think the spot zoning argument there doesn't exist anymore.
Right. You know, you've already got a pre-existing mixed use right there, and even the land across the street is, is commercial in nature. And the maps that we prepared, that we decided to put on hold while we move forward with the comprehensive plan, you know, we anticipated this area going to a mixed use corridor.
Any other, yeah, we closed the public hearing. Any other comments, questions by commissioners?
Yeah, I've got a comment that's, I want to first crack out of the box. This is what kind of stuff I got to look at, and this isn't worth a whole lot to me. I would have liked to have had a plant of some sort. The plant they had with that doesn't have a direction, no streets are labeled, and there's no scale on it, also no land surveyor seal on it. You know, I think that's pretty sloppy, you know, to ask me to make a decision furnished with this type of...
Well, this is provided by staff and not the applicant, though.
Well, if you look at their application, it says that they will furnish a scale drawing by a land surveyor right here on their application. That's just a comment. You know, I would hope I don't have to look at this kind of stuff anymore.
I already spoke to Mr. Nance and told him that someone can't, I can't say who, and I don't know what, but all the information was on my desk, and I have a lot of customers that come to my office, and someone picked it up. I don't know who, but someone did pick it up. So in the meantime, I did get in touch with both applicants, and they did submit information to me and resubmitted a new application. It's just that I did not have time to, by that time, everything was sent out to you. So I do have maps, and they did supply me with the maps. It's my fault that someone walked off with my maps and that information, but they did submit to me that information.
So in the future, we can expect to see something better than this?
Well, I would think, and I'll check right now. Do you have the...
No.
Why did we turn down the property next to it?
I'm sorry, I don't have the map with me right now, but I will get a map. And, but miss, I did have a map with the property.
Okay, so if we get one of these without a map, then we need to come back and see you.
Yes, sir, yes. And that's what happened. I mean, it did something.
Lance, I don't remember, why did we turn down the property next to it? Was it because it was MU? They were asking for MU?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
That's right. We didn't have that district at that time.
That's the site that caused us, I mean, it wasn't the use that we had a problem with, it's the fact that we couldn't restrict it, and that's what triggered us to bring back the MU district.
MU2.
MU2.
I guess when you go to the council, either way, just make sure you get the latest.
I'll make a motion for a recommendation that this property be rezoned to MU2.
A second.
Legal, can we do that?
Yes. The applicant has requested such, and that's going to take a figure for account.
Okay. Awesome. I wasn't aware of that. Great.
That's what she, she got that clarification. I want to make sure. All right. Motion to approve to an MU2 zoning by Sherri Slime and seconded by Bob. Any opposition?
Object.
Let's see, Mr. Marshawn objects. Any other objections? Zoning review, ID tract B1A2B2, property by Benjamin Valentine.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. Lance had mentioned that some of the packages have been lost. Do all of you have a map of this property? May I give you a copy of it? Now, I have two versions. I have a large version, it's blown up, it's easier to read, and then one that's to scale, the scale that you requested, and the print's so small I can't see it. So I made it in two sizes.
Will they fit under the video display there?
Yes.
You want, okay.
Did you pass this one?
Sure.
That's, that's, I'm sorry. That's the one that's enlarged. I only have five.
It's Mr. Nance. Now, we got five of the total share. Just every other person pick one of the, that's a full map. Surveyors involved.
It has the surveyors north, south, and the jointing property owners and everything. And we own B, my wife's here with me, Jody Valentine, and I'm Ben, which I said. We own B1A2B2, which is an 11.94-acre tract. I'll wait till you get a copy. And I think that the property is mixed use parallel to the airline highway, approximately 600 feet off the airline, or something like that. And if you notice, it slices off a part of our property, approximately four acres. And what we're doing is asking that that four-acre portion of the 11 acres be rezoned to mixed use.
Staff, this, we're talking about only the land in tract B1A2B2?
Yes.
That is, isn't, I mean, what is it that we're changing? It's the 50% rule would apply, and this is all MU.
Well, based on the decision that the Board of Adjustments made a few months ago, that was at the time, whenever this map was created, this lot didn't look like this. This lot looked, it was connected back to Germany Road. So based on that, he came in, resubbed this lot out, how long ago, Mr. Ben, a year or so ago?
About two, sometime.
Yeah, sometime after the map came in.
Six.
So based on that, for him to change the line, I suggested that he come in here and he make the change to the lot itself.
But we sat here when we looked at the ordinance amendment, and I specifically asked the question.
But that amendment is not approved yet.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm not quite sure what we changed.
You're changing the remainder of that B1, of what's not, the map itself, you're changing that line to reflect the lot line of B1A2B2.
But the existing rule, 51% rule, 50% rule would apply, would it not?
The lot, I guess the...
What's the ordinance say?
It doesn't change the zoning. It authorizes the use as mixed use. Use is correct.
Yes. This is, you're changing, you're changing the map itself to reflect the lot. That's what you're doing.
B2 and then B1.
So this is only to change the map?
Yes, which is what we're doing. Yes, sir, yes. This is to reflect that this lot, that we are authorized, I guess you could say, to change the zoning map to reflect that whole tract as mixed use.
You know, and I don't want to go through semantics here, but if the ordinance says that if more than 50% of the lot lies in one zoning district, then the whole lot should be, it would be considered to be in that zoning district, then the map, you know, by default is changed. Because the ordinance says that the whole lot is that zoning district, correct?
That's the way I interpret it.
And I think you're right. I mean, I think that's exactly the way I read it.
I think I was, too. But I'm just saying that based on past experiences that are past interpretation, I was not right. So to make this, I guess, correct, or make it, I guess, legal, we should go ahead and change this whole thing.
Past interpretation on this particular piece of property or...
No, it was on another one. But based on that interpretation, my feelings are, I guess, my, the way I interpret it is that he has to come and ask for the rezoning, which he's doing.
What's legal's take on the interpretation?
Well, the Board of Adjustments made a decision, and Lance is reacting to that.
Well, I believe I remember us before, and not just recently, but I thought we had, we had had someone come in before us, and we said, "It's more than 51%. We don't even have to hear this."
That is correct. We have done that.
Somebody has tested that decision, and the Board of Adjustments went the other way against Lance. So what he's doing is trying to make sure that we are all following in flow. Lance's interpretation, we agree with, but the Board of...
But the Board of Adjustments doesn't hear what we approve or deny, do they? Then they go to the council?
They questioned my decision.
His decisions on that can be questioned to the Board of Adjustments, and that's, he made, he gave a legal opinion, basically stating that, and they, they didn't agree with his opinion, so he's trying to clarify that.
Who officially interprets the court?
Me.
That interpretation can be appealed.
If there's a disagreement, they go to the Board of Adjustments. If you dispute that.
All right. No further comments or questions at this time. I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this, please come forward. You have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward? Public hearing is closed.
I'll make a motion.
Comments, questions?
I'll make a motion, direct staff to change the map and correct this.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
If we rezone this whole thing, it's outlined in yellow to mixed use. If an individual comes back and says, "Well, I'd like to add that next piece in there," and we shouldn't have to get it rezoned, does that automatically get rezoned?
No, it's a different parcel of land now.
But if they combine it and make it one, like, make it B1A2B3?
The answer to your question is conceivably yes.
Okay, so this thing can just keep going until it gets to Germany Road?
Well, and therein lies the problem, because when they come here for the subdivision, then we could, we could address it at the time, but from a practical perspective, he has to be zoning today by ordinance. It's just a question of the map. It's just a question of the map.
I'll make a motion. I believe Mr. Valentine has met the requirements of the ordinance. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval.
A second.
Motion approved by Sherri Slime, and seconded by Michael Marshawn. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number seven, business park review, zoning review ID 1959.08, D2-J, D2-I, and D2-G. Mr. Thomas Allen. Any comments, questions by commissioners?
I just, I noticed a couple of things that were missing. I didn't see a landscape plan. Did you submit one, or do you have one? Okay. And what about a lighting plan? I didn't see anything about lighting in here. Do you have anything?
We've got a landscape architect set up and designed for us. We just haven't submitted it.
And the second one was a lighting plan?
Yes, same thing. The landscape architect will do all that.
Oh, he'll do that also? Okay. And this will come back, this will come back before us to see those things? Or not?
How soon do you think that your landscape architect could have that?
Lance, isn't this part of the application? Your application is technically incomplete.
Would you consider pulling this from the agenda until you have everything?
It's up to y'all's discretion.
No, if you want, you have the option to withdraw it. You can request to withdraw it and bring it back when you have the missing information.
I would assume that's, if that's what I need to do. I'm not familiar with the process. You know, I thought I had met all the requirements, and I had met with Lance, and I wasn't aware of this. We had submitted it to the...
If you, if that's what you'd like to do, if you'd like to withdraw it and bring it back when you do have the rest of the information, that is your right.
If necessary, that's what we're doing.
Are you sure that's all that he's missing in his application?
What I would suggest is that staff goes back over the application with him and makes sure that he does have everything that he's supposed to have before it comes back to us. So if it's all right with you, I'm going to make a motion to defer this until you submit the necessary... If you can have it by the next meeting, that's fine. If not, that's, that's why, it's up to you, kind of, it's up to you. But defer this until the information, completing the application, is submitted and reviewed by staff to come before us.
Do you think you can have it to staff, so they could be here for the December meeting?
When does it have to be in by...
He's have to be in probably two weeks prior to the meeting.
Around the first of December. Okay.
But at the same time, I mean, the option, if you can't have it, if it's not until the January meeting, then, I mean...
Well, I'm in the process of already bought the building and the building property. I mean, it's sitting out there, so obviously, we need to move forward as quickly as possible.
Then motion to defer until the December meeting?
Motion to defer by Michael Marshawn, seconded by Beverly Barrie. Any opposition? Motion carries. All right. Next item is adjournment?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.